Good evening. I'd like to call the October 20, 2025 Madison County School Board meeting to order at this time. Mr. Doug Brown is going to lead us in prayer.
Good afternoon. We're not here. Gracious and most merciful heavenly Father, we love you, Lord, and we praise you, and we thank you for this day. We thank you, Father, for the blessings you bring to us each day. And, Father, we just thank you so much for our young people and the school system, and their parents, and all the family members. And we just pray, Father, that the things that we do would be pleasing in your sight and beneficial to these kids and their families. And we just ask that the business that we do tonight would be pleasing to you. And we give you all the glory and the honor and praise. In Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Say the prayer, please.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We got a couple of minutes to the agenda. Eight point two is going to be the SSAT report. And then I would like to move our workshop to the beginning of the meeting. So do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the agenda. I second.
I have a motion by Ms. Knight and a second by Ms. Thompson to accept, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Not? All in favor? Four zero? Okay, we got any further comment?
Yes.
No further comments, so we don't need to worry about that. All right. We'll begin with the workshop now. Dr. Pickles?
So at this time, as we did not have internet most of the day today, if you have sent your link, you did not have internet across the state of Florida. However, so my mom and I printed out the proposal just to make sure we would have it this evening. And we have Mr. Sam Kellert with the weird group, I believe I said that. Yeah. And his partner. So at this time, we'll ask Mr. Sam to come to the podium and give his presentation. Hopefully, we're able to do the, his offer and proposal. If not, it's internet for you.
Um, Madam Assistant Chair, and Mr. Chair, I have some questions. The questions that I have is why are we listening to another proposal? Those proposals that we were given, they had to be in at a certain time, and they had to conclude at a certain time, to my understanding, while we were here. And we had all the folk who thought the proposals were supposed to be in, those folk, while those proposals, those folk met up here with those proposals. So I'm under the impression that all proposals were supposed. What happened for it to open again? And it never was brought before the board to open those proposals again. It was a set date to have those proposals in, and a set date that those proposals was ending date. So those people who wasn't four or five people who could bring those proposals up, those proposals were sealed. And after those proposals were sealed, nobody could open them until they came before us. So I'm just wondering, why are we accepting more proposals now when it was supposed to be closed?
The board certainly is up to the board whether or not you wish to accept any new proposals.
Well, if we have one now, it has not been brought before us. I mean, you're, you're waiting here now to be excused instead of asking the board ahead of time. You thought that you could bring it on, and when you're bringing it on up here, well, okay, you got us. We don't want to say anything about it. But I'm just one person, and those are my concerns, that's all. Whatever the board exercise, I know majority rules, and minority does have a voice. So that's my vote.
Okay, so what?
Mr. Chairman, it's your discretion.
Okay, all right. Well, I, we'll just, I guess we'll have a vote on whether to hear the new proposal.
I move to hear the new proposal.
Hi, second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson and a second by Ms. Knight to hear this proposal. Any more discussion on this?
I will tell you, I was expecting one more proposal, but it never was presented. There was somebody that inquired just about the Panetta School, actually went to see it, and I thought I would be receiving that. I do know, I heard Mr. Reeves tell, overheard him telling somebody because they asked if proposals would still be accepted, and I overheard him telling the individual that the date that was set in the RFP, that was, that gave the timeline to start, and that the board could certainly accept additional proposals.
So this is my question. How many more proposals are we going to accept? How many more are we going to accept? You was expecting another one? Me as a board member, I didn't know about this first one. Now you're talking about a second one. I don't even know about the second one. But I didn't know that Mr. Reeves, I thought he was a representative for the board. I didn't know that he made decisions for the board without notifying the board.
Okay.
I think just to, just to reiterate, it's the surprise factor that she's addressing. So I think moving forward, if you know that you're going to be presenting these, it would just be a courtesy to the board for you to just notify us by email or by text.
Courtesy?
Hey, you know, I want to add this, you know, are you guys okay with it? I, I think it's what the intention is behind that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of hearing the proposal, raise your hand. All opposed? Three to one. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration. I really appreciate it. And hopefully, Ms. Hagan, we can, we can get you around on this one. I think this is something good that's really going to help.
As I said, majority rules, but minority does have a voice.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that was my voice.
And you know what? That happens in my own household. Anyway, so hey, guys, before, and do I have a few minutes here?
Absolutely.
I have a few minutes here? Okay. Let me first introduce you to who's in the room here, and I think this will be helpful for what we're trying to do for, for the county. Number one, I've got Stu Booker here, who, former lieutenant colonel with the United States Air Force, but more importantly, a combat controller. Combat controllers are arguably the most elite special operation forces group in the world. They attach to a special operation forces team like a SEAL team, fight alongside them, but then they're in charge of air support for the entire mission. All right? So they're air traffic controllers in sense. And I, I promise you, I've got a point to this, okay? He's a critical person here. Thirteen deployments, combat deployments, a true American hero. We also have a seven-two-four here, Ricky. They're tier one, tier one special operation forces group within Joint Special Operations Command. He's also a combat controller. And then we have Bud Lubin, who is also a combat controller, who actually teamed with SEAL Team Six to take out Bin Laden. Now, he's incredible with an ear scanner. All right, so I, I'm going to walk you through three, three things. Short term, midterm, long term, of how we're gonna, how we're gonna help the county. Short term, we want to create fifty jobs with my company, like, as soon as we can. Midterm, that's going to grow to five hundred from my own company. Long term, I think we have an opportunity to create thousands of jobs in the counties, this county, from multiple drone companies. All right? And I'll, I'll explain that here in a second. In terms of my own company, Aware Defense, what we do is we're transforming the human ear into a platform for both health and human performance. We do this by capturing stress contextual biometric intelligence. We just do it within devices we're already wearing. So in the military, we're putting sensors in their hearing protection, their comms, and it's the most effective hearing protection in comms they've ever had, and it's becoming the standard for the entire military, which is why we need to manufacture, you know, here, here today. And so, you know, we have the only tech in the world, which is right here, which we're happy to, to scan everybody's ears here in a minute, but it's the only tech in the world that can capture a certain location deep inside the human ear called the second bend. And when we put sensors in that second bend, anchor them there, that's when we can get medical-grade data from the brain and also other vitals, right? And when you got that, eureka. I mean, you can do a myriad of, of, of healthcare applications. You can drive a multitude of human performance insights. You can do precision therapeutics, because now I got brain, I got vitals, and I got a Vbat loop after I take a pill, or whatever therapy. And then in addition to that, you can deliver both pharmacological and non-pharmacological therapies in a headphone. All right? So the platform's not just preventative, it's also curative. Now, big tech is not getting biometrics from the ear right now. Apple, Google, you name it, and that's because every year's different. They're like snowflakes. There's no two alike, and that's one size fits all universal device moves around. Well, that's bad for sensing, and your signal's worthless, right? When we scan an ear, that device fits perfectly, it's anchored in, it doesn't move at all, so there's no motion artifacts, and then we're putting the sensors in the same place every time so we can build consistent learning algorithms about you. But this is a game changer. For the first time, we can get brain with context. Okay? If you want to get EEG, electroencephalogram, you go into hospital, you're in bed for three to five days, you're not moving, and you may or may not get any useful data. Well, with us, this warfighter can breach a door, fire a weapon, and we're able to get characteristics. So this is a major innovation that's coming here to Madison, and I want to manufacture here. And I think, yes, we're gonna, we need fifty to hire as soon as we can, but beyond that, I, I say five hundred, I think we could do a lot more based on what we're doing right now. Okay? Now, the type of employees we need and what we're going to do, which is going to lead to the, the big job creation, is we need to train employees for advanced additive manufacturing. Now, Trump, whether you love him or hate him, he's getting a lot of investment back into the U.S. He's, he's in-sourcing. He, he wants manufacturing here, but guys, it's not the manufacturing of, of the olden age, right? It's not Bethlehem steel. Advanced additive manufacturing is 3D printing, right, and 3D modeling. And so when we teach a workforce how to do that, we can leverage that to get other companies here as well. All right? Now, Aware Defense, with the hearing protection, and, and we are fastly becoming, like I said, the industry standard, the United States Navy is rolling this scanner out to all the bases, and when you roll a scanner out, that's a distribution point. I scan your ears, I'll just pummel you with different products, service, services, therapies, you name it, but once we got it, you're in our ecosystem. So they're paying for our distribution. The United States Army is doing the same, big army, as well as Air Forces coming along, as well as the Marines, and it's, and of course, Special Operation Forces as well. And we can help those guys for a lot of things, not just hearing loss and tinnitus, but anxiety, depression, PTSD, and operator syndrome, right, because we got access to the brain. It's very, very powerful. So that's where we're going to hire a lot of folks. Now, the county commission did me an amazing favor, and, and they had a lot of foresight. I brought, brought them to, to my home, Riverbend, just, just up the way. And what, what the ordinance they were able to change enabled us to fly drones and, and on my property. Now, what we're doing there, it's called Second Bend Labs. So Second Bend, I mentioned, is the location of the ear that optimizes the performance of sensors. You got Riverbend, and this is Second Bend. I, I came up with that all by myself. I'm really proud of it. And so anyway, so at Second Bend, what we're doing is, is preparing, preparing us for modern-day warfare. We're at war with China. We're not prepared. We cannot take them on the way, way we need to. So there's really three centers of excellence that, that, that Second Bend Labs revolves around. All three are going to help drive jobs here in Madison. The first is an elite training facility for special operation forces. It has a shooting school, which I'm happy to show you, and then it also has a human performance center where I can collect data from my hearable as we simulate combat situations, and then we can use that data to titrate their human performance, which is very unique. The second center of excellence is around new tech, like Aware. All, and getting a tier one guy like Ricky to, to come to your place, or, or to have a team in, in a certain location, they're hard to work with because they're deployed for three and a half months, or they're on, on call for three and a half months, or, or, you know, they're, they're resting. So having them in our facility, and they want to be here, a lot of technology companies want to work with these guys because they're so smart. They're like little MacGyvers, and they'll dial in your requirements, they'll dial in your product nuances, all right? But the third center of excellence is the one that's going to win the day here, where Madison is going to become Drone City, USA. And it is a center of excellence around multi-domain autonomous systems. So those are drones that are aerial, they're maritime, and they're also ground. So the reason why this is so important for our nation, when we hit China, we're going to hit them with five groups. Group one is a thousand-dollar drone that costs ten thousand dollars for China to shoot down. Group two is a ten thousand dollar drone that costs them a hundred thousand to shoot down. Group three is a million-dollar drone. We get all the way to group five guys, which almost is like a jet plane, but it costs fifteen million dollars for us to manufacture, but can, or to sell, but then it replaces a hundred million dollar F-35. So it's a math game. But we don't have enough capacity to do it right now. Okay? Now, the reason, one of the big reasons why that's the case, and we're, and I love this county, but the detriments and why this is such an awful thing right now, you know, disposing these schools, but it says a lot, your, your, your detriment's become your attributes, right? And that is because there's nobody out there manufacturing a drone that can then go fly. So think of Ford manufacturing F-150s that rolls off the line, and they can't drive it. So here, with the MOA, thanks to the county commission, right, and, and the MOA over my property, they can manufacture right here in Madison, Greenville Lee, fly it. It takes literally less than forty seconds to get to my property, right, from, from Panetta, right? And so with that, that's huge. Now, what they also want to be able to do is integrate with ground forces, because when we attack China in Taiwan or around China, whatever happens, I say attack, when we fight them, excuse me, there's, you're not leading with troops. You, the front line of sensors, the second line of attack is robots, right, the ground drones, as I'm calling them, and then autonomous systems. And then, and then you're going to hit them with troops, right? And typically, that's going to be a lot of soft guys that we're working with, with all of our applications. So, you know, that's where this is so important for, for the United States to, to build capacity for the development of drones. And if they can't fly them and then, and get certified, then you know what? That we can't build our capacity. So the center of excellence we're building, that Stu Booker is gonna, is gonna lead, I've, I've given you the write-up about it, but it's going to be something that's very interesting for the county in the sense that it's going to be a catchment for other drone companies around the country, right? We can incubate new technologies in, in the Lee Elementary School. We can get folks certified to, to fly. We can do a number of things that sets them up and then ultimately help them manufacture. Now, we're, we're trying to work with Doug and others to figure out, you know, all the different benefits that we can get to, to train a workforce, to build it up, but we're going to cookie cut this, okay? We're working with the Career Center right now. I feel confident we can hire the right people for Aware Defense, and then I feel confident we can train them on advanced additive manufacturing. And when you have that base, and you see that I'm doing it, and all the drone companies we already work with, they're gonna want to come here. And so then we can cookie cut this and say, hey, look, it worked for me, it should be able to work for you, and I think we can get the Department of War, I think we can get the state of Florida really behind this to create this Drone City, USA. And being able to have a place to fly, now, even if you create twenty thousand jobs, which I think can happen here, I really do, and don't hold me to it, but I think that can happen, and, and based on all, all this, this confluence of events. But if that, that happens, what's really critical to this, because I love this area, I've been coming down for thirty years, I don't want it to change. It's part of why I did what I did at Riverbend. It's beautiful, okay? I hate Atlanta. I hate this, I hate, I only want to be here. So even with twenty thousand jobs, it's really low impact here, right? It's not affecting this beautiful, this beautiful county we have here. But it's going to bring the right jobs, and I think that that's what's gonna, gonna help revitalize this amazing community. And, you know, having, you know, once you start building that critical mass, and you have this elite training facility and center of excellence around, you know, autonomous systems, man, it starts to push, pull, and it brings a lot here. It's going to be really interesting, and I think it's really exciting. What you're doing with Lee, if you, if, if you're, if you do agree to this, we're putting Aware Defense there, and we're going to put our center of excellence around multi-domain autonomous systems in that facility. The next facility, what we're going to do is go get drone companies to manufacture there. And, and you've got, the, the layup, the layout of those buildings are perfect for manufacturing, and then the proximity to the military operating area, and I, I'm sorry if I didn't explain that, we are in a MOA, which is controlled by Moody's, and what you do is you get a certified authorization to fly in a military operating area. The MOA extends two and a half miles south into Madison, and then the rest of it's in Brooks County. But with cooperation with Moody, which is what we have with our drone customers at Second Bend Labs, that's where, you know, you have this, this great area to fly, you create a counter-drone environment for them, and it makes their, makes their products more effective. So, you know, with that, I'm sorry, I, I said a lot. One of the other great things that's a negative in Madison, and especially at my place, is the cell coverage is so poor. The military loves that, but these guys absolutely love it because they say that they've lost connection, they don't hear me talking. Okay, so anyway, a little verbose, I apologize. But anyways, are there any questions, you know, about that, of what I said?
I, I guess so, yeah. Will there be, do you foresee any potential opportunities for apprenticeships with our high school?
Absolutely. I'm sorry I didn't bring that up. So, and, and this is what I talked to Dr. Pickles about, is that, yes, we want, we want apprenticeships, we want internships, and, and that is critical at, at Madison High, also the community college, but absolutely, and, and we'll help build this curriculum, not just for Aware Defense, but the, the reason why advanced additive manufacturing is so critical for drones is because they're 3D printing most of their parts, right? So that's where this, there's, it's a perfect fit, but we want to do what we can there to, to have, to obviously have those, create that apprenticeship program and run it well, and the internship programs, and selfishly, we want to hire the best that are in those apprenticeship programs. Right? All right? But then, you know, they start to see other drone companies appear here. By the way, one just bought the, the Regal boat manufacturing plant in Valdosta, Red Cat, and so they're going to turn that into, to maritime drones.
Okay.
Okay? So it's, you know, you're going to start to see this happen, and the first one, we want to go in that Panetta Elementary School, since it's so close to, literally fifty seconds from being able to fly in a MOA. So, so to reiterate, what's so unique about the area, number one, is that you can't manufacture a drone and go fly it anywhere. Here, you can do that. You, and they certainly don't have special operation forces that they're going to integrate with. Like I said, that's what's so critical. Sensors, robots, drones, and then troops. They don't have that. Well, we provide that at Second Bend Labs, right? And then the third, the center of excellence, where you started getting, getting folks certified, the PLA, Chinese Air Force, everybody's flying a drone, okay? Every single one knows how to fly sophisticated drones before they start flying planes. That's not the case in our military. So the Air Force Academy is going to start coming down and practicing drones as an example. So that's a, you know, it becomes a catchment, and, and, and everything starts to revolve around it, and it starts to build a real critical mass. Excuse me. Sorry, did I answer? I, I answered your, your question too much.
No, 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 that's actually, that's really good. You know, I know that we, as a board, are going to have to make the decision that's best for the community.
Yeah.
Regarding these buildings. And jobs and apprenticeships for our students is, is huge. So I'm glad to hear that. I also see.
An imperative, by the way.
Yes, yes.
Not, I mean, not, it has to happen in order for this to work.
Right. I see also in your proposal that you're willing to, to just acquire Lee and Panetta and exclude Greenville. That's, that's a possibility as well?
Absolutely. If that's what you want. And, you know, the, yes, you know, whatever works for y'all. And then our goal, if, if you do this, decide to do this, is to, is to work really hard to fill off that building with a drone company. And if you're building a line of, of drones, one line, say the Vbat from Shield AI, which, by the way, is the, is the drone that's taking out the Venezuelan boats, okay? It's five hundred people per line, per five hundred jobs you need, right? So that's how this can get, this can get a lot of fun for, for the community.
Anybody else have any more questions?
I have lots of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, location, where are you presently located? You say you have land here?
Yes, ma'am. It's.
And where's that land?
So right off of Madison Highway, it's eight thousand acres.
And is that on, located on the Cleveland Highway? Are you the people who came into the planning and zoning committee and said that you had purchased a plantation?
No.
When you came into the planning and zoning?
No.
No question about it?
No, I've, I've been an owner since nineteen ninety-four.
Okay. Okay, now, you're saying that you can, um, give us almost twenty thousand jobs on the voting register. I doubt we had twenty thousand people on the voting register, but what I'm concerned about and what I'm worried about is Madison's, of course, we're a low poverty area. We have lots of people who needs jobs.
Yeah.
And the way that you're proclaiming.
Yeah.
Who your jobs will be will not be for the common man. We have.
and other places. And we're not gonna be able to employ everybody, but I really think we got a good shot to, to employ those that are underemployed, that are driving 45 minutes out of the county to, to work.
And see, those people have jobs, so they're working. What I'm concerned about for people, as I said, who do not have jobs.
Yeah, yeah, and I-
And you're saying thousands of jobs.
Oh, I think so, absolutely.
I'm just laughing to myself, because you're saying thousands, twenties, thousands of jobs, all these thousands of jobs, it just does sound true to me, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, well, I'm-
All these thousands of jobs.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a visionary, and I just think that that's where we can get to-
I can see too, I am a visionary too, and I can see, with this little community of Madison County.
Yeah.
I can see something, but I can't see that many.
Okay, all right, well, how about this? I will bet you a dollar that within 10 years, we're gonna create 20,000 jobs.
Well, let me just ask you this, and I just heard you say that the county commissioners did your favor. Were, were giving favors here now? County commissioners? Doug, are we giving favors here now?
They, they, they-
Not you, you don't live in Madison.
Actually, I do live in Madison as well.
Now, I'm talking about the man who's being fantastic, according to his stuff. Um, yeah, Doug Brown, who's on the desk next to you.
Well, well, look, you know, I-
Because I know the position that he holds here in Madison.
Yeah, so, so the reason why-
Some of the town people, and these people, these farmers.
Yeah, they did, they did, yes, ma'am, and they did you a favor because they created an environment where we could create the center of excellence, where we can attract drone companies that will hire people in the area. That's it?
What I'm wondering, I, okay, I heard that, and I'm wondering, our farmers and these folk, because we've had people to come in, get torn up and messed up in all kind of land. We have complaints here now, where we have these county commissioners meeting, not those and when our representatives, Allison Tan and Cora Summers, come in. We have people complaining about how it has come up and how it's torn up there from sticking up one thing that they said they would do, and they're not doing those things, and promises that are being made, and promises that doesn't come true.
Oh, wow, okay. Well, it's good that, that we, we do what we say we're gonna do, and we start by really protecting the warfighter, and we're excited that we've got a lot of things we can help them with, and I'm really excited about manufacturing here and, and hiring people, and, and, you know, this is my, this is my home. I wanna be here, so.
You live here in Madison, and I've lived here all my life, it's not sustainable to me, what you're talking about.
Okay, and, and I-
Maybe some of it, some of it, yes.
I completely-
But all that, it's just too much for my brain to comprehend.
I get it, I get it. It's crazy, Drone City, USA. I get it, dude, it is, it is way out there.
And you're telling us we're gonna go to war sometime soon?
Um, we are at war with China right now, okay? So, that, that being said, I'm really excited about creating jobs that can help the community.
I don't like half truths.
I'm sorry?
I read, I write, I understand what I read and what I write, I understand, and I try to do my punctuations and all that good stuff and whatever, just writing whatever. But anyway, those are the questions I have, and my main concern is what would the people in the county say about this, all this new stuff? Okay, what about, and my main concern,
Yep.
Jobs for the common man.
Yeah.
And that main concern are people who will not qualify for these jobs.
Okay. Have you, have you read my qualifications?
I have not.
Okay.
But then, when you're talking about dealing with the United States government, those qualifications are-
Uh, well, I'm a private, I'm a private company.
And then when you get with Moody Air Force Base and whatever, and Moody Air Force Base, that's an air force base, they take in recruits and all that, and people work there, and fill in the boxes, you check it, no job.
Okay. Well, you know, I can, I can hire who I want, and so if they qualify, we, we wanna hire them.
Well, they won't qualify, that's the magic word, they will not-
How do you know what my qualifications are, ma'am?
Well, tell us what they are. Tell me.
I told you, it's someone who has dexterity, who can, who's good at arts and crafts.
And that's one, one qualification.
That is the, a critical qualification for our line, and if they can't do it physically, then they can't do it. We can't hire them. There is 3D modeling, there's all these other things, but we can train folks up, which is part of why we wanna do these apprenticeships in the school. So, you know, I, I, I get it, there's always gonna be naysayers, but we're gonna try our hardest to hire as many people as we can, you know, and I'm, I'm confident we can, working with the Career Center.
And you have qualified that statement, that you can. See, that you can is the qualification of that statement.
Okay.
See, when these felonies don't qualify, you can't. So, you said those that you can, but those are my questions.
Okay.
And I have lots more, but I'm finished. You got the gist of what I'm saying.
Um, I would just like you, for the general public, if you would just go into detail about what the in-kind will cover.
The in-kind-
So, what, what your, your offer for the buildings?
Oh, yeah, we said that we would-
Just break it down to, for the people who aren't looking.
Yeah, absolutely, it's, I, I think you wanna relocate from this building, and that any one of those buildings, we will create the space for you if that's what you want in either one of those buildings. And then you don't have to pay rent, you don't have to pay insurance, you don't have to pay anything. So, I don't, I don't know if you're moving out of here immediately, I think it's a couple of year time, but yes, absolutely, we'd love to have you, especially for y'all helping us out.
And what is the purchase price? You said you wasn't paying us. You will pay us zero percent purchase price, and then you will go to the county road, tax collector's road, and then ask for a tax break?
Um, yeah, we will ask for a tax break.
We, we got plenty taxes that we can't afford and whatever, that we need to, we have nestless war that we're always fighting with, that we need those tax monies and stuff.
Yeah.
So, if we're gonna give it to you, we can just, just do away with that tax burden and all those people who are complaining and don't want their taxes paid.
I, I think it's-
If we don't give y'all the taxes, Madison's the poor county.
I know it is, I know, I know.
And the promises of jobs, just the takeaway, the takeaway that you're getting just unjustified to me.
Okay, well, and I, I understand that, and I, I think the, the biggest thing is we're investing millions of dollars into this facility and to train a workforce that I think can be really amazing, you know, based on the current global trends.
Mr. Sam, if you'd like, I can go over the concession and considerations.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, similar to a couple of our other proposals, then we had a couple of proposals that there was a $10 exchange, this one is a $1 exchange, um, and the in-kind, they'll do a 10-year initial term, and then with two five-year renewals, and then what they'll do is allow the district to have a permitted use of administrative and office purposes at whichever site, and then they'll be, again, responsible for, they will pay the insurance and utility costs, which would then be a savings to us, and they'll make any alteration, they'll have any alterations, we're not allowed to make any alterations, and then we're not allowed to reassign or sublet or anything. So, there would be, while there's no monetary upfront, it would be annual savings to us. So, um, there is that to consider, where the, I know there were two that were a $10 proposal, um, then there were one or two that did have a monetary value assigned to it. And then, Mr. Sam, if I may-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just to answer Ms. Hagan's question, in your vis, vision, you are a non-government-
Correct.
Um-
We're a commercial company, right.
So, Ms. Hagan, they are not government.
But they would be having contracts with the government.
So.
And then there are certain circumstances that the government will ask you for.
And so-
And in order to get those contracts, you have to go by whatever they're asking for.
But I, Ms. Hagan, I believe, though, one of our things that we've discussed is by him starting out with his 30 to 50 jobs, while they, he will try to find those from individuals locally, but if we can start our internships and things, and he can help us build this curriculum, then he can try to then start to build that workforce there with our students and more or less homegrown individuals, and so then he will have individuals to pick from.
I heard Dr. Pickles, I heard what he said, thank you. I did hear him.
Yeah.
I, I read, I did hear him, and I did read some of this stuff, so thank you. I understood it. I understood Dr. Pickles.
20,000 from our popular, our little declining county individuals will have to bring and move here to have the students come and, and influx into our school system, so he will have to find-
But tell us where our students are with reading and math and all that in the district, and compare it to the statewide district, will we qualify for those students? Now, I know we was number one in our sports, but then we were getting Fs. Our schools were grade Fs in education, number one with championships in sports. So, where are those students really gonna come from if we start whatever, and we're not making progress in reading and math? It's just a little bit of progress being made, not a whole lot of progress.
With all due respect, Ms. Hagan, let's move on from there, because we're not here to belittle our staff and our students.
And I'm not belittling the staff, and I'm not belittling the school, I'm stating facts of what, what anybody, and this has come, and it is only stated forward, that we were number one for championships and F with the school district, so this is where the, these, these are where the workforce is coming from. So, that's all I want to state. If the workforce is coming from there-
Respectfully, our district has not been an F district, and we didn't have a single school with a grade of an F.
Not this time, and you can say what you wanna, but I've been here, I've been here, I've done that, and what I'm speaking and what I'm saying is the truth, and it can be verified. Whether you want to admit, whether you want to talk about it, well, that's what I'm here, I'm talking about it.
Don't disengage.
Can I just say one thing? And, and it's no question, but-
Yeah.
The thing that intrigues me the most about this is it's gonna give some of our kids an opportunity, and that opportunity, you know, I've always, I've always, you know, I've always thought our kids need more opportunities.
Absolutely.
This will, I mean, if, if there's an internship or whatever, and class being taught out at the high school, that sort of thing, you know, all, all, all these, all these schools is our kids, I mean, James Madison's, James Madison, but they still ours, they in our county.
Yes, sir.
So, but for, for them to have opportunities down the road, right now, they don't, none of them got any opportunities.
They go to the air force, they go to college.
Please let me talk.
Yes, sir, I will.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
They don't have, you know, we don't have the opportunities. Yes, sports gives some of our kids opportunities, it does. But that's, you know, we need, we need more, FFA gives some of our kids opportunities, but we need opportunities for our kids. That's what intrigues me the most about the whole thing, is, is them, because I'm up here because of them.
Right.
Nothing else in this room matters to me but them.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, you know, that's such a great point, and part of this, you know, I talk about internships, talk about apprenticeships, but also just exposing them to this world of, of, of added, advanced additive manufacturing, robotics, I mean, autonomy, this is the future. And getting them over for field trips, I will do that every day of the, I mean, not every day, but we will do what, we will plan that out, and so they can all see this other world, and maybe it inspires them to wanna do that, right? And so, you know, that to me is, is something that we would love, love to do as a company, and, and, you know, you have, they might not listen to me, but they'll listen to one of these special operation forces guys who could come in and say, yeah, sorry.
I will say that, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. We have to think outside of the box in this county if we want our kids to have opportunities to grow and to build, you know, for them in the future. And, and when you mentioned robotics, I will remind this board that our own robotics team won number one in the nation.
Number one in nationals.
And so, we have children here in this community that don't have opportunities to advance their abilities, and that is huge for me, you know, as an individual, to provide those opportunities for the kids that we have here already. So, that's, that's all I have to say.
That, that's amazing. And so, that scanner right there is most akin to robotics. It's a, it's a sophisticated sensor, it's got the only integrated tracker in the world that can track inside a small cavity, and so, you know, and tracking, so the three cornerstone, I know you, you know this, you've got actuation, you got, you got sensing, and then you got controlling, planning, navigation. That's what that is. And so, just them seeing that and understanding that, um, you know, we're, we welcome that, and we want kids of, of all walks to, to come into our school and to, excuse me, come into our, and, and into our, our facility, which will be more campus-like as well. These centers of excellence are more educational than, than anything. So, we'd love for that to happen beyond an internship or an apprenticeship, and our door will always be open.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think all, if, if you all did decide to do this, a contract has to be drafted, all that kind of thing. So, I think all you can do tonight is decide whether you wish to move forward. If you do, then what you would, and I should have introduced you at the beginning, but you got Megan Logan in the back, who is the attorney that I conflict out with when we, when I have a conflict. The, Mr. Kellin, his organization is one of my firm's clients, and so, of course, we would conflict out. So, if you all would like to proceed, then-
Excuse me, we've drawn up a contract already, so all the other proposals-
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
I understand, something about, if we wanna proceed with this contract.
If I said that, I made a mistake.
You did say it.
Um, well, I apologize. I, if, if you all want to proceed, the next step is to draft a contract, but I couldn't do that for you because I would have a conflict.
Well, I understand that conflict of interest, and I was very concerned about that anyway. My first steps in the door, when I met Mrs. Morgan, I told her that I was concerned about the conflict of interest you represented in this company and representing us too.
Right.
And there is a big conflict of interest.
And, and so that's why I got her, so there wouldn't be a conflict of interest for that. But anyway, uh-
Oh, so which one of us would not represent the school board of them, since it wouldn't be a conflict of interest? Which one, you gonna give up?
Both.
You gonna give up their, their contract and our contract too?
I, I'm not in this-
Or you gonna still try to represent both?
In this tr-
The school board and the, and, and the company?
I, I wouldn't represent either one in that, in y'all's dealings with each other. So, the, Ms. Logan would represent-
It's already there, it's there, it's there, it's there. But, um, what I'm saying is, we're not gonna consider any of the other proposals that has been given. So, this proposal has come in last, nobody knew about this proposal, and now we're suddenly talking about drawing, drawing up contracts and all those other proposals that we got, people who were here and believed in this system, and they gave those proposals on time, they bought the proposals when the proposals, they were given a date that those proposals was closed out. So, we're not considering them anymore.
No, I don't think that's what we, as we said.
No, we still are. Actually, I keep, um, reaching back out to Mr. Reeves to try to find out the survey, so I can bring everything back to you.
And that's what I thought, that we were waiting on-
We were waiting on the survey results.
For those proposals, and we were supposed to survey, we were supposed to divvy up land and property, and those proposals that we had gotten in, and how we would deal with those proposals, who would get what if they were still interested in stuff and whatever, and of course-
I, I think if, if this were to play out the way it has played out in this whole process, thank you all for your presentation this evening. It will be taken into consideration with the rest of the, the contracts that we have. When we have all of the data together, obviously, we will workshop it, and we will be making a decision on who it will be awarded to. So, thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you, appreciate you.
May anybody wants to get their ear scanned.
You don't wanna know my thoughts right now, I promise you. We're gonna keep those right here.
You are welcome to stay or for the rest of our board meeting, or you're excused for the, now that the workshop is so long.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Smiling faces. Yep, smiling faces do tell lies.
So, we can now-
All right, all right, here we go, here we go.
Just do the proposal and project.
All right, we are going up here to the consent agenda, 4.1 minutes, 4.2 fundraisers, 4.3 2025, 2026 first quarter report, 4.4 field trip request, which I don't think we have any.
We have field trips.
We have field trips.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the consent agenda items.
I second.
I have a motion by Ms. Knight and a second by Ms. Thompson to approve the consent agenda, uh, to accept the consent agenda.
Is there? Mr. Chairman, one thing of record, if you look at 4.3, that report from Rod Williams, if you go on the public side, there's not a report there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's, that's-
That's confidential.
Oh, at 4.3 is, uh, is-
That was called, you moved to 8.12. That was called, they moved to 8.2.
That's the one we moved down to 8.2 with.
No, that one is in executive, that just cannot be visible.
Right, right. So, any discussion on this? If not, all in favor, 4-0. 5 consent agenda items, curriculum and grant awards. 5.1 is the Florida Tutoring Advantage Program Data Share Request Agreement, and 5.2 is a grant approval. Do I have a motion to accept this consent?
The data share agreement goes along with the admentum that we previously approved a month ago. And this is their data share agreement, and then you see the four grants.
Mr. Chairman, do we approve the consent agenda?
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion by Ms. Hagan, and a second by Ms. Thompson for approval of the consent agenda items, curriculum and grant awards. Any discussion? All in favor, 4-0. All right, 6 is one we don't have.
There's no staff travel at this time.
Okay, so we're going down to 7?
7.
Consent agenda items, financial and HR. 7.1 is the sick leave transfer request, and the 7.2 is personnel.
I move to approve the seven items, 7.1 and 7.2 of the consent agenda.
Well, Mr. Copeland, I'll go over it for you real quick.
I'll go over that real quick with y'all. Good evening. Sick leave transfer request, we have two individuals that are here with the district now that are requesting to transfer their sick leave into the district. And you have the documents for each of those. And I just wanted to remind everyone that this is, I'm going to read a portion of our policy, 3430.03, related to transferring in sick leave. It says, "Sick leave may be transferred from other public schools in Florida funded through the Florida Education Finance Program. Transferred days may only be credited in a number equal to the number of days earned in this district." So, we're booking their carryover sick leave, but they're not immediately having access to the portion. I just wanted everyone to be reminded of that.
Yes.
And so, if you have any other questions on that, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Do you want to go ahead and go over the personnel?
Yeah, we can move to the personnel items. You should have that in your package. We have, up there at the Madison High School, we have one current instructor we're proposing to, who will move into an ESE staffing specialist position. At the Central School, you see that there are five proposed paraprofessionals. There's one resignation from the Central School, you see in the bottom portion of the page. And then, on the next page, there is one approval request for a sub-teacher paraprofessional. And that's the sum of our personnel action for this meeting. Y'all have any questions?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion on that?
I move a motion.
You have a motion, I got a second?
I second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Knight, to accept the consent agenda items, financial and HR. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? All approve?
Oh.
All in favor, okay.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Okay, 8.1 is the financial policy hearing and approval. At this time, I'm going to open up for the public hearing on the policies that have been advertised.
Mr. Chair and Board, they have been advertised, they have been advertised a little bit longer, but we wanted to ensure they were advertised, because working with our board docs, one moment they would show they were on board docs, and then the next they were showing that they were not advertised. So, we did advertise them a little longer than the necessary 28 days, but to ensure that they have been advertised. Ms. Richardson had to keep calling to find out why they were not showing that they were advertised, or showing up under the public view.
Okay.
But these are all the slew of Neola policies. You'll see there are some that are changes, there's some that are being rescinded. So you'll see the nice long list of policy changes. And I am expecting another list at any time. So there's some technical corrections and rescinding. So, once the, there's no public hearing, I do recommend that the board accept.
Anybody out there want to say anything on the policies? All right, do I have a motion?
Frank, you have to open it, and then you have to close it.
Oh, yeah, all right. Didn't I open it?
I didn't hear you.
Just go ahead and read.
I'll reopen it. We're going to open it again. Public hearing for the policies is now open. Nobody? Nobody? All right, now the public hearing is now closed. So do I have a motion to accept the policy?
I move to approve the policy changes.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Hagan, to accept the, to approve the policies that was advertised. Any discussion on any of them? All in favor, 4-0. All right, 8.2 is the 2025, 2026 FSSAT report. Ms. Wade?
It's like, where is he?
He's right there, he's right there.
He's hiding.
As you know, every year, State of Florida, Florida State Schools requires to do the Florida School Safety Assessment Tool, which is pretty much an assessment, a security risk assessment for the district. You guys have viewed it, and, you know, given input, and these are the things that we use to make sure that our kids are safe, and things that we need to improve upon. So I ask that you guys would approve that.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to accept the FSSAT report?
I move to approve the FSSAT report.
A second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Thompson, and a second by Ms. Hagan, who approve the FSSAT report. Any discussion on this? Not, all in favor, 4-0. All right, we're going on down here to superintendent item, 9.1.
Sir, I did receive that invitation, that I will be easily scanning and emailing a copy to each of you. It's inviting us to the college for Ms. Page, Dr. Page. So it's in November. And so that's the biggest thing at the moment. So that's all, unless you have questions of me.
When is that?
November, November 18th, I believe. I just got it just a few minutes before and took it back. And so, that's why I thought I'll scan it.
9.2, Mr. Attorney item?
No, sir, not unless you have questions to make.
Do you have updates on our survey?
I do not, I haven't reached out to them, but we'll get those.
I'll keep harassing them.
She does, she's merciful.
This is my last time for, this is my last night on the chairman thing. So, you mean, I can't talk in the same-
You're not moving away, or?
No, I'm going to still be here, I'm going to move from here to down here somewhere.
All right.
All right. Boardman items. Ms. Hagan?
Just want to thank everybody, as usual, for everything that you do for the school system. Volunteers, money that's put in here, free work, thank you, everybody. Staff, starting with our superintendent, and it goes on. Principals, teachers, everybody, thank you for what you do.
Superintendent, would you like to do an update to the board on the auction from Greenville?
I can. So, on the, after the auction at Greenville, the total was around $34,000. That was brought in. And I believe they moved everything. I know of two items that individuals were not able to pick up, and they have to go back, and they, one individual has already reached back out to see if they can make arrangements. Mr. Muggie is now going to start at Lee.
Lee will be next, because I've had inquiries, okay.
Yes. So, there were items that they did not get put on the auction. And those items will, well, we've talked about doing another auction there, or either putting those items on at Lee. So, I think the last consensus was we were going to put those items that did not make it on the Greenville auction, and we're going to put those items on our Lee auction.
EB.
No. No. On his site, don't ask me, it's high something. High bid or something like that? Ask my husband, he's a frequent buyer. You would laugh, he bought five very lucky-looking desk chairs, and they ended up in tree stands.
Well, that's what he does.
He was very pleased with his purchase.
He's retired, that's what he does.
He's retired, he's very pleased with his five chairs he purchased. But Lee will be our next one, and then Pineda.
And that will be published?
As soon as, yes, as soon as he is ready.
As soon as he has a date and everything set, please and thank you.
And we will share it on Facebook again, and I know he sends it to his subscriber list, too.
Thank you.
You think it?
No, that's it.
Mr. Chairman Carroll, would I say one more thing?
You sure can.
I just want to thank whoever did this decoration. It is so beautiful, when I came in through the door, and I noticed it, and I noticed that it's some of my colors that I have on tonight, but it's just beautiful decoration. And it's something that you did for us and for this boardroom, and whoever did it, thank you. And relay that on to them, Madam Superintendent.
That was Ms. Tammy and Ms. Jennifer.
Oh, okay. Well, Ms. Tammy, you're here hearing me, thank you. It's beautiful.
I would just like to thank everyone that is here in attendance and watching online. Thank you to all of our staff for everything you do. That's all I have.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and that's here. Appreciate you, appreciate our resource officer. Are you a resource officer?
I am.
She is a deputy, it's an SRD.
Thank you for coming.
Well, can she introduce herself?
Oh, sure. Let me just spin before the point, introduce who I am. So my name is Michaela Ware. I originally come from the Madison Police Department. I was employed with the Madison Police Department for two years. June 30th of this year, I was employed with the Madison County Sheriff's Office. And I've been employed since, and I am a school resource deputy at the Madison Central School.
Welcome to the team.
Welcome, Mrs. Ware.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank, Mr. Brown's left, but I appreciate him doing our prayer tonight. And if that's all, we are adjourned.